Commissioners Boardwork Session, it is Thursday, November 17th, 2022. It is 9:08 a.m. The session is set to go until 10:00 a.m. This is a hybrid meeting. We're in Building 1, Room 280. For public virtual attendance, you may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. I'm Carolina Mejia. I'm the Chair of the Board, joining you via Zoom. Vice Chair Ty Menser is in the boardroom. And Commissioner Gary Edwards is joining us via Zoom as well. Also in the boardroom, we have County Manager Ramiro Chavez, as well as Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell, and the Budget Team. And today, we will be discussing the Budget Amendment 2 final decisions for amending the FY 2022 budget. And decisions are requested today. So, Robin, passing it straight to you.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Mejia. Good morning. Robin Campbell, Assistant County Manager. And this morning, I am asking the Board to make decisions regarding the, or preliminary decisions, regarding the Budget Amendment 2 for the 22-23 biennial budget. This amendment is generally an opportunity for offices and departments to bring forward unanticipated receipts in the form of grants and any other amendments necessary to close the fiscal year. And these preliminary decisions are fairly binding because there is no public hearing held on a budget amendment. So, what the law says is that the Board will can make budget amendments. And if you should do so, then what you need to do is to publish the amount that will be adopted in each week for two weeks prior to taking a vote. And then, according to our legal advisor, the vote that you take has to be on the amount that is published. So, the decisions that you make today will be the amount that gets published in the next couple of days. It'll be published each week for the next two weeks. And then, on December 13th, you will have an opportunity to take an up or down vote. And that's really our last chance to amend the budget. And you'll see that there are a number of things in this budget that I would highly recommend to you is necessary to do to be able to close the fiscal year, so.
Robin, can I ask a question really quick?
Yes.
Have any of these items on the budget amendment, were they included when we were making preliminary decisions on?
On the midterm?
On the midterm, yes.
No, we did not, the opportunity for offices and departments to submit budget requests had not closed at the time you were making your preliminary decisions regarding the midterm. So, we did not have this information at that time. We try to get a little closer to the end of the year because we're trying to assess what absolutely needs to be done to be able to close the fiscal year. So, any other questions on the process? Here are none. You can always ask a question if you think of one as we go. But I'm hoping that this is going to be a fairly quick meeting. You had an opportunity to review these items last week, and you've had a week to think about them. And hopefully, we'll be able to knock out some of them in total and then spend the bulk of our time on the policy requests. So, first, we're going to look at the maintenance items. And Nicole, could you share the screen?
Sure.
Thank you. There is one maintenance level item. It is to provide the appropriation authority to make expenditures from the bond holding account. This is from the bond proceeds that we just received at the time we issued the bonds. So, this budget amendment reflects the $50 million in revenue that just came in and $1,143,000. The $143,000 is to pay for the closing costs of the bond. And then, the million is to cover the expenditures made so far on the projects that we're going to use the bond money for. Any questions on this one item?
Questions?
No.
Commissioner Edwards?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, so with this item, is it a yes or a, Commissioner Edwards, for you, since I can't see your thumb, sir?
Yeah, I would appreciate if you can verbalize your position, Commissioners, that since I cannot see you, and the public cannot see you either on the Zoom.
Okay, yes, I will vote yes under protest. I don't know if that means anything. You know where I've stood on this, but I want to keep the process of government functioning, so yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Menser?
Yes.
And then, yes, for me.
Great. Moving on to the grants. I'm gonna go straight to the bottom line in grants. And the bottom line is on Page 5. And what you will note there is the total fund impact of the grant items. For the general fund, you see in 2022, we are acknowledging grant money that we're not going to receive, and we're reducing expenditures accordingly by approximately $127,000. And in 2023, grant funding is increasing in the general fund by $614,000 with expenditures of $616,000. Now, we can take that $2,000. Remember, this is for the Safe Babies program. And it is unanticipated. As the Board had approved, if we hadn't gotten this grant money, we would have continued the program with treatment sales tax funding. So, we could still charge that $2,000 to treatment sales tax and have zero impact on the general fund, if you so choose. But it's only $2,000. So, it's just not very much money. In all other funds, either the revenue balances to or exceeds the grant funding or the expenditures, and/or the grant funding is being acknowledged and the expenditures are already included in the budget. So, overall, the grant items have no impact to any of your funds.
Questions, Commissioner? Commissioner Edwards?
No, I have no questions, thank you.
Commissioner Menser?
No, thank you.
And Robin, I have a question on year 2023. So, that's the $2,000 you were talking about, correct?
Yeah, yes.
That would be a change, okay. And I guess just for members of the public, if you don't see many questions, this is our second briefing on this. We did an overview of the request, and so today, we're just making decisions. So, Commissioner Edwards, we will start with you. Do you approve of the grants?
Yes, thumbs up.
Commissioner Menser?
Yes, for me.
Great. Moving on to capital policy. I would just, you mentioned about all of the capital policy items that, for the most part, these are projects that the Board is familiar with, projects that have been approved in the past and are, for the most part, costing a little more. The first item on lines 1 and 2 is reduction because that project came in under budget. And the rest of the items are requests from Public Works to increase funding because these projects are for reasons beyond our control, coming in over budget. So, we're asking for additional funding for those items to be able to complete the projects. There is no impact to the general fund. If you look on the bottom line and Page 2 of 2, the total impact to the road fund is in 2023, $700,000. As you saw last week, there is sufficient funding in the road fund to cover that increase in cost. There are actually savings in '22 in the REIT 2 fund. And then, funding in Boston Harbor and Tam O Shan reserves is, Boston Harbor balances to no impact, and Tam O Shan would spend an additional $50,000. So, or actually receive $50,000 from REIT. So, overall, positive for the funds. Any questions about the capital policy items?
Doesn't help if I'm on mute. Questions, Commissioner Edwards?
No questions, thank you.
Questions, Commissioner Menser?
No.
And no questions for me.
All right, then I would ask your approval of the capital policy items.
So, capital policy as a whole, unless there's an item a Commissioner wants to remove it and vote on it separately, Commissioner Edwards?
I'm good, thank you.
You're good with the whole thing? And then, is that a yes for you?
That's a yes.
Okay. Commissioner Menser, are you okay with the whole thing?
Yes.
And is it a yes for you to approve it?
Yes.
And it's a double yes for me as well.
Great, thank you. So, moving on to the more complicated piece of the amendment is policy items. We have four pages of these, and for these, I will go line by line. Answer any questions you may have and ask for approval of each line, or not approval of each line, as easy fit. So, the first item on this is the, from the prosecuting attorney from the general fund. The prosecutor is asking to add a victim advocate position to be paid with COVID backlog. And I would remind the Board at this point that midterm was the opportunity to ask for additional positions. And generally, generally, you don't do positions, new positions in the midterm or the amendment. You do them in the midterm, not the amendment. Any questions about this?
I'm gonna jump in, because I can't see the chair. Is there a, isn't there like a separate process, though, with regard to accessing the COVID backlog money? I mean, should that be, because when we were here before, we weren't even sure where they were funding, because my notes say COVID backlog, question mark, ARPA, question mark. We weren't even sure where the money is coming from. So, now you're saying it's coming from COVID backlog, so shouldn't that be considered slightly separate track than our typical rules stream of?
Yes, absolutely correct. The prosecutor is suggesting that we would pay for this from the backlog funds, and there is a completely separate track for our funds.
I plan to set up a meeting by the end of the year to have a check-in point on all the backlog positions the Board authorized. Recently, you authorized two positions, one for public defense, as you may recall. So, as part of that status will be where they are and how are in those positions, what is the rate of expenditures based on the $1 million the year released from ARPA funds. And that point is when this position can be brought as a potential conversation with the Board.
When did you say that'll happen?
Before the end of this year.
Okay, so you're just suggesting denial in this process? Because there's gonna be another process where they can potentially advocate for that, correct?
Right. The Board has approved backlog.
I'm not really in terms of the backlog.
You have money earmarked for court backlog.
Right.
And we may go through that.
We weren't spending it very fast at one point.
We're not, we're still not. We're still not spending it.
So, I don't, I don't want to get overly procedural, you know, but as long as there's a track for this to be considered.
Yes. So, my recommended, recommendation is to not approve this item at this time in this form.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes, my question would be, as long as this does not affect the general fund, at what point would it affect the general fund with ongoing costs? And would we put an end date in to keep this from having an adverse effect on the general fund?
So, the way that the prosecutor has proposed it in this form is it would have impact on the general fund. This is part of the recommendation that I'm making is to say no to this particular ask and then have it wrapped into the backlog conversations that we're having with all of the offices that are related to clearing up the court backlog under ARPA. You've already appropriated money under ARPA. You would not need to do this additional appropriation.
And also to follow up, Commissioner Edwards, you're correct. All the newly created, created positions under the backlog has a December 31st, 2024 end date.
Okay, well, I'm gonna go ahead with Robin's recommendation and the county managers.
So, for this one right now, it would be a no? Is that correct, Commissioner?
That's right. That's what is being recommended by staff.
Okay, Commissioner Menser?
I'm in agreement with that, so I know.
And then, I'm in agreement, it's also a no for me. Does this also apply to Item 2 and 3, Robin?
2 and 3 are a little different. Item number 2 is requesting the Board to add an FTE for the prosecutor's office to, for a chief criminal deputy prosecuting attorney position. And number 3 is a request for a temporary legal assistant position. And those would be the chief criminal deputy, let's take them one at a time. Line number 2 is the request for a chief criminal deputy FTE. And Romero has his hand up.
I briefly mentioned to the Board that I had a discussion with the prosecutor on those positions. And as I mentioned to John, that I was going to recommend the Board not to approve this request. There's a little bit of history on this. The prosecutor had this position and became vacant, I believe, at the beginning of 2020, if not the end of 2019. So, the result of that is that he reorganized that position, which he created, downgraded, so created other positions. So, as a default, that position was eliminated. Fast forward, he expressed to me that there is a need to have this position back. But I mentioned that this is not the right time, the process in which this position can be argued. And we agree that I will work with the prosecutor's office with John next year to make sure this position is fully discussed in front of the Board. So, my recommendation at this point is for you to deny this.
I agree. They, had the prosecutor wanted a new position, it should have come in on the midterm.
Questions, or are we ready for a decision?
Yes, if you'd like.
I guess I do have a question on that.
All right, go ahead, sir.
I believe that we're talking about almost a total of $300,000. And that's gonna affect the general fund. And I'm curious about if the position was not filled for that three-year period, did we get that money back?
Oh, no.
No, the position was, the position was reclassified.
At the request of the prosecutor, the chief criminal deputy prosecuting attorney position was actually abolished. And instead, two other positions were created at a greater cost. So, this position didn't just sit vacant. At the request of the prosecutor, it was abolished.
And he's requesting to reinstate as a new position.
Okay, but we'll be able to entertain that early next year. Is that right?
You would entertain this in the biennial budget. So, the prosecutor would basically need to wait another year to get the position.
If he finds a vacancy, that he can reclassify, he goes through a reclassification.
That's absolutely true, and absorb the cost.
Yeah, and that was probably just my conversation with the prosecutor. If he doesn't want to wait for another year, if this is actually a very important position, those are the options. It's a vacant position that he can probably reclassify, and he will absorb the cost in 2023. And that is the conversation that I had with him.
Okay, then, Madam Chair, I'm good with the county manager's recommendation.
That's a no for you, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioner Menser?
I also agree. I have spoken with the prosecutor about the position. I think, long-term, it's gonna be a position we're gonna need. But I agree with the approach suggested by the county manager.
And it's a no for me.
Okay. Then, the third item is also a request from the prosecutor. Then the third item is also a request from the prosecutor for a temporary position. Um, this position is to implement the E Prosecutor Case Management System for the civil team. And the Legal Assistant One would assist with scanning, organizing, converting all the paper files into digital, and would also support the move to Building One. We don't know when Building One will be ready at this point, but, um...
And you may, the board may remember that you, you pre-located decisions for the midterm. You did not approve a public defense request. And also, similar, for a similar position. And also, the board had a conversation, because the prosecutor has already a person who is already involved in the E prosecutor implementation process. My recommendation for you is not to approve this.
And I echo that recommendation. There's no reason this request could not have come in, in the midterm.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yeah, I'm good with that recommendation, thank you.
Okay, so that's a no for you, sir?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Commissioner Mensah?
I agree with you on that.
Okay, it's a no for me.
Right. The next item is Budget Authority for the Sheriff's Law Enforcement. Um, this is to cover the COLA and retention bonus. Uh, we had a discussion last week. Without this funding, the sheriff's budget would be overspent by approximately this much money.
And our recommendation is for you to approve this request.
Absolutely approve this request. It's necessary to be able to close the fiscal year. And by the way, Heidi Thompson, fiscal manager for the sheriff's office, is here today if you should have any questions.
Questions, Commissioner Edwards?
Uh, no, I do not have any questions on this issue. I'm in favor of it.
Commissioner Mensah?
Um, yes, I'm in favor. I guess I would, could I ask Heidi a question? Since she's here, and she's used to come.
Heidi, could you come up to the table, please?
Okay, so, I'm supporting this, but, um, I wanted to just kind of sort through the, um, the kind of parallel issue of just like the communication between, about, you know, going back to 2019, and you know, there was the overrun of overtime, and the board hadn't heard about it. But then Sheriff Snazza said, well, we should have heard about it, because there's monthly reports. And why didn't, but at some point, somebody didn't catch it, or we didn't catch it, and it wasn't flagged. So, I just wanna, you know, and I was hoping we'd kind of work through that and, and not have those kind of situations. And so on this one, I just wanted to make sure that the communication, like when, because as the county manager described it to us, we thought this was gonna cost, you know, extra $30,000 or $40,000. It's costing, you know, about nine times that or whatever. So at what point would we have, would you have given us a heads up? Or would we have caught this, like, so that we didn't get caught by surprise about it?
So, um, you talked about the double overtime?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I was not aware that there was an agreement of what folks thought it was gonna cost. Um, so, um, every month, I send out a report to leadership, to staff, that shows what the overtime, it's kind of like, I came from the state, and so we have a, um, an allotment, the expenditures, and then the variance, and that's by month. And, um, so folks can see where overtime is going. It's very clear. And so, um, I, your question, to put a long story short, I wouldn't have been able to, because I wasn't aware of what the agreement was, of what that double overtime was, was going to be.
And Heidi, when you say you send a report to leadership, that's leadership within the sheriff's office?
That's not to... Not, not to, yeah.
Yeah, because we don't, don't.
So, um, I did do the projections. We do quarterly projections. Um, I am, what the right word is, conservative about those, um, because I don't wanna show that we're gonna underspend a significant amount, and then be caught off guard. I, I think Robin does the same projection type of, of way of doing that. Um, and so we are projected to be about $2,200, right on the bubble, underspent. Um, from our, from the sheriff's office perspective, these are negotiated costs. Uh, see, you know, collective bargaining, negotiated costs. And, um, so, when that's negotiated, we're, our expectation is, is that that will be funded, with those, the COLAs and the retention bonus and all that, so.
And I thought that we, I think our understanding was that it would be, starting next year, we would fund that, but this year not, and that's where we got to.
So that wasn't communicated to me. Um, I don't know if that was communicated to leadership or not, but...
So, so the, when Heidi did the, as far as typing goes, Heidi turned in her quarterly financial plan, just on time, like she does. And I was going through these, and went, wait a minute, what happened? Um, and that's when we both became more...
Because it only started in July, and the quarterly would be somewhere.
Right.
That's right.
That's right.
Okay. There wasn't really any delay.
Nobody, exactly, nobody delayed, nobody was hiding things. I think the disconnect came in the amount that, at the time Romero approved the, um, agreement for the double overtime. Uh, he was given one estimate, and it's coming in so much more.
Okay, well, yeah. We can, seems like to me like we can usually head problems off of the past if we catch a miracle. So I'm just trying to see, make sure the right channels are connected.
I'd also like to say, I very much appreciate Heidi. And after the, our last conversation, she reached out, made an offer to have regular meetings with the budget team, so that we don't encounter this again.
Yeah, this, this report that I send out, like I said, it's got, taking our overtime allotment divided by 12, it's, it's very simple on the allotment side. And then the expenditures are each month, and you can clearly see overtime going up right when that MOU, um, took effect. But, um, we also have other things that are affecting that overtime. You know, if we've got somebody out on LNI, or, you know, out on FML, or whatever the case may be, we have a minimum staffing requirement, so that is gonna drag up our overtime as well.
Yeah, so, yeah, I'm just hoping, you know, I'm never gonna probably be at that level, so I wanna make sure the right connections between your office and budget office, county manager are there, so that we just grab these things as quick as we can, and so.
Certainly, certainly, that, is a lesson to learn for all of us, and if anything, we can just improve the process in the future, for sure.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions? Go ahead, Commissioner.
So Commissioner Edwards voted yes. Commissioner Mensah, where are you on the vote?
Uh, yes.
Uh, and then, for me, I mean, we just did it for community planning and economic development. I think when, you know, we found that shortfall. I, I do have a couple of questions, but I can save those for later. It won't affect my decision. It's more of a curiosity, more than anything. So, for now, I'll say yes.
All right, great, thank you. All right, moving on to item number five. Uh, this item is the Insurance Risk Fund, and it is the payment to the risk pool to cover our increased...
Sorry, Robin, go on. I'm looking at my notes from our last session on this sheriff item.
Yes.
And I wrote, there was questions, I believe, from Commissioner Edwards about ARPA and all that, and you were saying that the bonus piece might be eligible, but you would have to...
We, yeah, we might be able to sort out the bonus piece. Um, I don't know that anyone's had an opportunity.
I actually have.
Oh, yay.
It would, if we paid for the bonus amount for the three months, because it started being paid in October, so it'd be three months for the staff, and then two of the captains already received their bonuses. And I keep looking at Heidi's for her confirmation. Um, it would be $142,000. That would be ARPA instead of general fund.
So we could certainly do that.
Can we do that?
Yes, we could do that, mitigate.
Sounds better than zero.
All right.
That would not be a stretch.
Yeah, no, that's not a stretch at all.
And if some other commissioners will agree, I'm guessing.
So, $142,000?
And that's actually pretty close to what Heidi has in her, in the statement of need. She has, uh, the budget authority shortage is $140,500 for the retention bonus. That's the very last sentence. So, I got the numbers from Maria last week, for what had been paid for our...
So they pay $240,000, will be a combination of ARPA, $140,000, and $100,000 for general fund.
Yeah, that would be great. So, uh, is the board, I'm going to ask for board approval of that.
That's a yes for me. Commissioner Edwards, sir?
Yes, that is also a yes for me, and thank you for, to Commissioner Mensah for bringing that point out. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Mensah.
Thank you very much for remembering that.
Commissioner Mensah, is that a yes for you, sir?
Yes.
Thank you for calling that.
Taking notes sometimes helps me.
Doing my work.
Doing your work.
Good job. $100,000. Okay, cool. Um, moving, moving on now. Uh, as you all are very aware, we got a much higher bill than anticipated from the state joint risk pool. Um, so this $1.3 million is to cover the additional appropriation authority necessary to be able to pay our contribution to the risk pool, and that would come out of the risk fund. Um, it is allocated, and the revenue is reflected in the midterm. So, um, I would recommend approval of this item.
Commissioner Edwards?
And that is going to come out of general fund?
No, the, the $1.3 million is a payment out of the risk fund, the insurance risk fund. Um, there is, like, the 60/40 only, it's probably more than 60% general fund. Um, but that is all in the midterm. It's all taken care of in the midterm, the additional revenue into this fund.
Okay, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, so that's a yes, good from Commissioner Edwards. Commissioner Mensah?
Um, yes, under protest.
I was gonna say the exact same thing. I was gonna be like, yes, under duress. Um, okay.
All right. The next item is line six. Uh, as we discussed last week, we are seeing a, a sharp increase in unemployment insurance payments, mainly due to letting go temporary employees who had been part of the response to COVID. Um, so this line item is an additional $300,000 a year to be paid out of the Unemployment Compensation Fund. And you reviewed the financial plan last week for that fund and saw that we have ample fund balance to be able to make these additional payments. That's why we maintain a large fund balance in that fund. We recommend approval of this item.
Commissioner Edwards?
Uh, no questions, I'm a yes.
Commissioner Mensah?
Yes, no questions, yes.
And a yes for me.
Great. Uh, line number seven is the ERNR Maintenance Fund from Central Services. Uh, as we talked about, um, there was a Vactor truck that had been damaged. Uh, the repair time is taking longer than we anticipated. So we need an additional $74,000 to pay for the rental of a Vactor truck while we wait for ours to be repaired, and that cost will be covered by insurance that you see in the revenue line. Recommend a yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yeah, no questions, and I'm a yes.
Commissioner Mensah?
I'm a yes.
A yes for me as well.
Great. Moving on to line eight, also from Public Works. Um, the operating costs for the Tamshan Beverly Beach Sewer Utility is increased by $16,000. And we talked about last week how this is probably due to an allocation of costs. And you will recall that, um, there are a number of utility funds. Public Works does their best estimate at the beginning of the year of how much of the costs will be charged to each of the funds. And at this time, the, um, this particular sewer utility needed more time than had been anticipated, so they need to be able to cover these personnel costs. $16,000 this year only from the Tamshan Beverly Beach Sewer Utility Fund. It has no impact on the general fund, and we recommend approval.
Commissioner Edwards?
Uh, no questions and yes.
Commissioner Mensah? A yes for me as well.
On to page three. Um, line number nine is from Solid Waste, also in Public Works. Um, and this can briefly be described as garbage in, garbage out. Um, so we are, we are generating, um, a great deal more in tipping fees, um, because we are receiving an increased volume of waste at our waste disposal utilities. And, um, with the amount coming in, it needs to be hauled away, so the contract costs for the hauling are also increasing. But there is more than enough in new revenue to cover the increased cost. Uh, revenue estimated $685,000. The ancient spend expenditures is $550,000. And we recommend approval of this item.
Commissioner Edwards?
Uh, no questions, and this is a yes.
Commissioner Mensah?
Yes, on this one.
Yes, for me as well.
Thank you. Um, line item 10 is one of two positions that I am recommending approval on. Um, they are in the midterm at my request, or not in the midterm. They are not in the midterm at my request, they are in amendment at my request, um, because these are two positions that the board has already established this year. Public Health needed that authority this year to be able to begin the hiring process and to, to be able to fill these positions immediately. Um, they are being funded by the increased revenue in foundational public health, uh, and they are necessary to be able to manage the amount of money that is flowing into public health at this time, and, and will be on an ongoing basis. So both line items 10 and 11, um, are financial positions that I am asking for your approval on.
Commissioner Edwards?
Uh, no questions, we've covered this quite extensively, and I'm a yes.
Commissioner Mensah?
Yes.
And, yes, for me.
Finally, thank you very much. Uh, and finally, line 12, also from Public Health. Um, this item is an FTE that will staff the Board of Health. Um, this item is an FTE that will staff the Board of Health, the new expanded Board of Health, and Romero would like to weigh in on this.
Uh, yeah, recommendation, I believe, based on the conversation Commissioner Mensah requested, I think it's it's good to have a holistic approach how the Board of Health will be next, um, next year. Now, considering the 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 five commissioners will be part of our future, uh, which that is going to change the Board of Health as well. So next year, we'll bring a proposal comprehensively as to how we're going to be managing the the Board of Health, all both from big, who will be the administrator. And at that time, we'll assess the needs of what additional, uh, perk of the board. So my suggestion at this point is for you not to approve this request. And we'll bring that next year on a more comprehensive way for the board to weigh in.
Thank you. Commissioner Edwards?
Uh, no, I I concur. It looks like things are going to make some changes and we're going to have to adjust to it. So thank you.
Commissioner Mensah?
I agree with that. So I'm a no on this one.
That's a no for me.
Okay. So, um, with that, I will just, um, share the screen and show you the, um, the graph. If I can figure out how to share my screen. Let's try to zoom and share. So the graph, it's funny on the surface, but what you see here is that the, really the only impact to the general fund that you approved was $100,000 to make the sheriff's budget whole with the remainder coming from ARPA. Um, and so this graph is very much the same as where you left it after the preliminary request.
Because that was a, that's a one time.
That's right, but it's one time. Because next year, the funding for the sheriff includes the impact of the, um, all of the bargaining agreements. And the the double overtime ends at the end of this year. Is that true?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So we're still in very good shape when it comes to the general fund. And unless you have any questions or comments, that's all the the budget team has for you today.
Thank you. Thank you. Questions, comments, Commissioner Edwards?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Mensah?
No.
Okay, I don't have questions as well. It's 9:54 AM. Thank you to the budget team today and thank you for Heidi for coming in and answering some questions for us as well. Uh, with that, we are adjourned.
Thank you.